And students in our community. It's time for us to wade into some difficult topics that can cause some strong reactions. Most notably, over the last number of years, our classes, curriculum, professional development, and special events have increasingly included much more in-depth study in social and emotional issues, racist studies, and detailed sexual and gender topics. While I certainly see that these may be important issues for children to confront, it is incumbent upon each and every adult here and at home who is responsible for the well-being of a child to deeply reflect on whether the prevalence and prominence of these matters is appropriate throughout our schools or whether they are sensitive topics that often interact with very personal issues and family values and are better taught at home. While our Simsbury teachers are excellent, I sincerely question their qualifications as psychologists or social workers to be conducting emotional learning that sometimes borders on group therapy. At a time when our students, by our own statistics, are falling well below benchmarks post-pandemic, particularly in critical areas like math, wouldn't students be better served having additional subject matter time than taking four hours out of precious class time to have Equity Week? I want my children to be kind, inclusive, thoughtful, and good citizens, and I teach them that every single day. But right now, we're all just doing the best we can. They're trying to figure out who they are and how to pass the next math test, but instead of class time, they now get to attend sessions on antisemitism put on by the Anti-Defamation League or what the Chef versus O'Neill lawsuit said about equity instead of equality in education. Sure, there are alternatives, like the queerness of Disney villains and how to make Asian wantons, but those were not unsurprisingly full. Those were unsurprisingly full. Now that we've been unmuzzled, it's time to start having some very real conversations about what our children are being taught and whether it really belongs in the classroom. Let's take off the masks and start talking. Thank you.
Okay. Is there anybody else who would like to speak?
All right. Seeing now, we're going to move on to committee and Board of Ed Communications. So Alex, we're going to start with you.
Yes. So at two in last week, we celebrated all things music with special thanks to Ms. Grasso and Dr. Ford for organizing performances by the Special Chorus and Orchestra. Central is running a twin and triple Spirit Day this Friday, the 25th. Additionally, it has been announced that the Scholastic Book Fair will be up and running again during parent-teacher conferences from March 15th to 17th. Latimer will also be having fun this Friday with their popular virtual bingo night from 6:00 to 7:30. At Squadron Line, the Science Fair is returning for the first time since the start of the pandemic on March 25th, and registration has begun for that event. And also Squadron Line is accepting orders through March 30th to buy a sapling that can be planted in families' yards. Their goal is 140 saplings planted by April 30th to offset a year's worth of paper usage at the elementary school. And then announced that for all elementary schools, registration for sixth graders to choose their middle school language and music courses closed yesterday, the 22nd. At Henry James, a new book club has started with the next meeting commencing on March 14th. All are welcome for a fun discussion with the first book being The Raft by S.A. Bodine. And then finally, at the high schools, signups for Equity Week opened this morning at 7:00 a.m. All students will be attending four sessions during the week in mid-March to learn more about various cultures, perspectives, and social issues. And lastly, the spring play of the high school is decided to be Radium Girls, and the first wave of auditions is being held tonight.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Tara?
I did, we did have a meeting, a curriculum meeting, a couple weeks ago, and it was wonderful. And we talked about a new course, Geo...
Advanced...
My notes are...
Advanced placement human geography. That's okay.
Advanced placement human geography, which is going to be, it's, I don't know if we know yet how many people have signed up for it because the school, the classes are just being signed up for now, but it should be a nice opportunity for more students to be able to go in depth with a topic that they find a passion for, and it'll be a great chance, another opportunity for extended and in-depth learning. We also talked about DESA, which is a state mandated opportunity for our SEL, our social emotional learning, things that we've put into place, and it is, DESA is a way of measuring the success levels and of the, of what we're doing. So I, we will hear more about that as time goes forward, but that is metrics that are in place, and we will be using them to monitor what we are doing and hopefully see man, monitor success. And we also spoke of...
Those were the two babies.
Those were the two babies.
And just, yeah, I might add on to that, that the elementary tool to measure that learning is actually teacher-generated through eight questions. We communicated with families the week before the assessment. They had the opportunity to opt out if they so chose. We had very few opt-outs, and they've actually decided, we heard last minute, last week actually, that the high school self-assessment is being postponed until the fall. So we'll hear more about that.
Okay. Terrific. Thank you.
Not at this time.
Okay. Tara?
Tara.
Sharon, I didn't even see you sneak in. Hello.
Hi. So Alex mentioned some of the things I was going to mention already, but I was able to watch the Spirit Council meeting, and the Spirit Council is considering changing their name. And the name that is going to go before the Board of Selectmen is the Council, Council of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. So there was a lot of discussion around whether or not they should have equity in the name because of the Equity Council and wanting to make sure that within the community, since most of their focus is community and ours is the school, that there's not confusion between the two. It's going to go before the Board of Selectmen, and the Board of Selectmen will make the final decision.
Okay.
So that was one. And then the other was around, there was a discussion around the Minority Recruitment Fair that's coming up, and my question around that one is whether or not Dr. Bachelor is participating in that?
She sure is.
Okay. Because that wasn't clear in their discussion. And then you mentioned Equity Week, so thank you. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Watson?
Nothing right now.
Okay. Sue?
We received a pleasant surprise that this state subcommittee that got together to discuss remote learning and the guidelines sent those guidelines out to districts yesterday, so we are in the midst of reviewing them. They are also hosting a series of webinars to kind of explain and provide context as we delve into them further. So I'm signed up for that webinar next week, and then I will report back to the board. But the guidelines are really written as opportunities for innovation for school districts. So again, certainly more as we make sense of those and decide any implications for Simsbury.
But to clarify, that's just 9/12 at this point, correct? Or is it everything?
9/12.
9/12, right? That's correct.
Okay. I just didn't want people thinking we were going to have that for the younger kids. Okay. Neil?
I think I'm going to have a couple of comments after Mr. Curtis.
Okay. Amy?
I'll do it.
All right. Mr. Curtis?
All right. Lori, in her public comment, mentioned transition towards a mask optional model, so I wanted to just kind of update people on where we are on that and kind of revisit the timeline a little bit and give the board an opportunity to comment on things. So we are transitioning, you know, the mandate will be lifted on February the 28th. That is supported by both State Department of Education, State Department of Public Health. We've been having ongoing conversations over the last week and a half, two weeks, about the guidance that was being developed by the State Department of Public Health with our Farmington Valley Health District. At this time, they're in support of this move towards the mask optional model as well. Participating Farmington Valley districts are all moving in the same direction on that, and they actually surveyed districts across the state, and it's 90% of districts on the 28th will be moving to the mask optional model. So just some interesting data. When we looked at our community and our area, we were looking at our very high vaccination rates, which we've talked about and updated the board on before, the fact that hospitalizations, hospitalizations is a metric now that DPH is focused much more on in terms of talking about decisions moving forward, and certainly the capacity in the hospitals is in good condition now, and we've seen a significant decline. I think the latest count today was about 240 individuals across the state hospitalized. The case rates have really plummeted. I mean, they've gone down fortunately over the past three to four weeks significantly, and DPH has talked about the realization that Omicron, while highly contagious, is a much more mild version in terms of the symptoms that our students get, particularly school-aged children. So those were the driving factors. The guidance that came forward from DPH was kind of thematic, you know? It really talked about the data points that I gave you, but didn't have specific cut data points to make decisions, more kind of analyzing trends as we move forward to make decisions. And the language that they used, I liked it, I know we're sending a letter out to the community tomorrow, is that we're transitioning from what they call the pandemic emergency response model towards a model that really aligns with a more standard approach to the management and control of a virus. So it's one of those strategies we're going to focus on during that timeframe before we pull back on other things, but certainly this is a step that people have talked about for quite some time. We appreciate all the input. I know the board has as well, that you've gotten and I've received, to help us arrive at this decision, and we're prepared to move forward on the 28th. Farmington Valley's been kind of working on just some concepts and things that we're going to share with both our staff and our parents later this week, and I'm going to kind of kick it to Neil to talk about a couple of those pieces. You know, we're really moving the focus away from counting the individual cases towards identifying any clusters or any significant outbreaks that will take place. So it's definitely a different philosophy in terms of how we monitor things, even as the masks come off. Go ahead, Neil.
Yeah, so just a few things that are highlighted by this transition from emergency response to routine management. The most important one is one that's been in place all along. We are going to continue to emphasize to people, stay home if you're sick. The most important thing is to, we do think that at-home tests will help with that, if people can take an at-home test and have it be negative and, you know, be able to attend school, but we're going to ask people to continue to be conscious. There will still be quarantines of positive cases, and that remains in place of a five-day quarantine followed by wearing the mask on days six through 10. So that would be the only requirement in terms of that. One of the main parts of the strategy is this self-test kits, and they are now widely available and will become even more widely available. You may have seen some stories. School districts were invited to a Phase 3 of picking up literally thousands of test kits, and the instructions that we were given is to give two test kits, which have two tests each in them, to every family, every staff member. They want people to have a set of tests at home for use when they need them. So that test pickup, which was originally scheduled for Friday, just got snowdoryed. So we will pick up our tests in the middle of next week and probably be distributing them at the end of next week. So we'll put out a communication to families to say, hey, on this day, we're going to send kids home with tests, and therefore your home use as you see fit. It's a really important element of the strategy of this becoming more routine. As you remove one mitigation strategy, the Farmington Valley Health District and all 11 schools districts involved have agreed to reinstitute some supplements of contact tracing. When Omicron had hit at its most contagious point, you simply couldn't contact trace the cases anymore. Now that they will be at a more manageable level, they're asking us to do, at the elementary level, just a classroom and lunch-based contact trace, not to quarantine people, but to simply call those families, inform them, there may have been a close contact, you decide if you want to test your student, your child, with one of the tests we provided for you, and it's informational, but it's not to be quarantining people anymore. And Farmington Valley is very much like moving away from that strategy. At the secondary level, middle and high school, where the vaccination rates are higher than they are in K through 6, the strategy is much more of analyzing your positive cases to see if you're seeing what they're defining as a cluster, three or more cases on, for instance, a hockey team or this English class, like, are you seeing patterns that would cause concerns to then be at a greater level of information and potential testing of the population that you're seeing as a cluster? We will continue with the rules. I don't know if this is one that's going to be very popular, but we want to keep getting it out there. The bus rules are not changing, so we are going to ask parents to send, if their child needs to take a bus or a van to or from school, that is federal mandate that they still need to have. Here, that might change in the next few weeks, but for the beginning of this, we hope people will simply cooperate with a rule that may not make a whole lot of sense in this context, but people need to. The other place I do want to just say publicly where a student who is mask optional might be asked to put on a mask if they enter that space would be a nurse's office. That's the other place where they might be given one of these disposable masks for a few minutes while you're in here, in case somebody in there was contagious, and then they could remove it when they left. But that would be the only other place where we might require a mask for a brief period of time. And then lastly, Farmington Valley Health District, even though vaccination clinics have sort of slowed down, they want to offer one more chance. So if there are folks out there who want, who either want to run through the first two doses, the dates are March 2nd and March 23rd, they're going to be, we're hosting again at Henry James, it'll be early evening, and you can also get boosted there if you haven't been boosted. So it's sort of a, whatever level of service you need for your vaccination that's happening.
And is that open to all ages?
That is, they'll take any, they're really just throwing it open to the community.
Okay.
And we're happy to host. So, and otherwise, as we are moving into this, I do want you to be aware that as Mr. Curtis talked about mask optional, our teachers are holding age-appropriate conversations about what's going to happen on Monday, you know, some of us will be masked, some of us won't. Here's why people make those decisions. And they're, you know, they're being very thoughtful about making that a community conversation about what's going to be a change for our very littlest ones who have never not had a mask on when they come to school. So that's started and is going well, and I think will be continuing over at least tomorrow. We'll see where we are Friday with the news now.
Tara.
Neil?
Sure.
Do we know, or I guess maybe we won't know until next week, other schools or places where they still want students to wear their masks if our students go for a sports event or something else? Will we know that in advance so we can, you know, abide by the host's?
Yeah, so I think the CIAC needs to get some clarity on that quite frequently. They have not been really clear about that, because if you're playing a Hartford school, for instance, that's a district that has said they're going to keep the mask. So I think we are seeking some greater clarity on that.
But wouldn't we just honor, it's like if I, you come to my house and I say, please take your shoes off, you take your shoes off, wouldn't we just honor, if we're playing in their district, wouldn't we just try to honor what they want done? What if the CIAC comes down?
That may be the policy for the CIAC. The interesting thing is, right now, the actual timing, it's state tournament time, so a lot of these things are played on neutral sites. So I think they have to figure that out. I think you might have different teams doing different things.
And you're going to, once the basketball and hockey are done in the next few weeks, the mask activity of your activities are going to be outside.
It's going to be outside. That's right. So outside would be not an issue.
Not an issue.
Right. It's just the intro.
Yep. Thank you, Neil.
Thank you very much. I would like to give everybody an opportunity to comment on this point in time. It's been a long time that we've all been working with this, and I would first just like to give my praise and thanks to Matt and Neil and Sue and all of administration, everybody who was on a task force in the summer of 2020 and again in 2021, and everybody who worked to build distance learning, all of it. This, you guys have led us through a very difficult storm, and I'm very appreciative. So with that said, I would turn it to you all to make your comments.
Yeah, I was just going to, if I could just piggyback on what you said, this has easily been the most divisive issue since I've been on the board, and I appreciate your guys' work on this, certainly with the masks. It's been science-driven, it's been metrics-driven. Now, some people may not agree with some of the metrics, but the motivations have not been political nor have they been emotional. So I appreciate all your guys' work on that. It's, as Sue just said, it's been quite a couple of years, and I'm hopeful that we can move forward, and I hope the students who want to continue wearing masks get the same respect that the folks who wanted to get rid of the masks do, and I'm glad we're having the conversations as usual.
Yeah, that's an important piece of the puzzle, is the climate.
Yeah.
Lead with kindness. Brian?
I'll say something. I completely agree with what Jeff said and Sue, what you said, but, you know, what I'll say is, I just want to thank all the kids.
True.
I mean, over the last two years, what our kids have been through as a parent of a current seventh, 10th, and 12th graders, it hasn't been as difficult for them, you know, for my kids, but it certainly hasn't been a fun experience wearing a mask for two years. I know my senior is, and my daughter as well, have been counting down the days and hopeful for a snow day on Friday, so that's one less day.
No pressure, Matt.
Seriously, you know, it has been a couple of years, and the kids, I can't even imagine how it has been for the five- and six-year-olds who've never gone to school without a mask on, and like you said, Jeff, I hope the kids that choose to still wear a mask are, you know, feel safe doing so and don't feel threatened in any way, just like those who take them off shouldn't feel threatened. So kudos to you, Matt, and your entire team over the last two years, you've done a phenomenal job.
Anybody else?
I concur. I think it's been a very difficult job, but as always, we've stepped up and done it with thoughtfulness and with gathering as much information as you can to make very reasonable and responsible decisions. And we're very lucky to have you all doing that, and thank you very much. I'm glad that we're slowly getting out of this. It's going to be a great place, but being respectful of each other is always our important aspect in our primary care, our health and welfare of our kids, our primary care, and hopefully we'll all be kind to each other.
Hi. I agree with everything that everybody has said. It's not, the masking is not something that I'm sure anyone enjoyed. Some people, you know, they really feel safe, get used to it. It's, it's been a hard, hard thing to do, and the administration, the teachers, the, you know, the students, the parent people coming to the meetings, it's, it's been difficult, and I appreciate the guidance that we've gotten, especially the transparency. I think that we've been very open with the community, with the board, as to what we're following, what we're doing, how we're going to make the decisions, and, you know, I hope we don't have to make any other kind of decisions anytime soon, but I feel confident that we'll follow the right experts in guidance and metrics going forward. But I certainly appreciate everything that, Matt, you and your team and the whole district has done throughout this. Look back on this.
Someday.
Someday. Sharon, you have anything you want?
All I'll say has been said, and it's been interesting times. I'll just say, and it'll be interesting to look back and, like we were just saying, to see how this plays out into the future, but most importantly, as you said, the kids, you know, and it'll be good to see little ones running around, you know, without masks, but those that do, you know, let's just be kind. You know, kindness is the way, so.
Lydia, who could not be here, she's traveling, she did ask me to just read a comment. She said, Superintendent Curtis has owned COVID mitigations and procedures from the start. We are consulted, discuss approaches and concerns, weigh in on considerations, and are always kept informed. We have always relied on decisions based on the superintendent's recommendation of what is required and not required. We followed the mask mandate, heard from parents on both sides of the issue. I fully support the superintendent's plan for mask optional based on the guidance from the DPH, local positive metrics, and local health advisors, by highlighting the need to help students with the transition while balancing the needs of keeping schools open and, more importantly, keeping our children safe. So with that, we can move on to recommended actions. Alex, I didn't ask you if there's anything you wanted to say about being mask optional. I'm sorry. You're more than welcome to add to the conversation.
Olivia, I'm a little excited. I think, I was thinking about it today, like, how, I think it would be fun in, like, English class discussions to, like, see people's non-verbal cues. I think a lot of what I do in school is not me speaking, it's like a lot of facial expression, so I think it'll be fun to actually leave the room, you know, discussion, that kind of thing.
Very good.
Okay. With that, I'm looking for approval of minutes of February 5th, 2022 workshop.
Motion that we approve the minutes on the workshop?
Okay. And a second. And all those in favor?
Aye.
And Alabstein?
Alabstein, please.
Approval of minutes of February 8th, 2022 meeting. Can I get a motion?
I'm moving.
And a second. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And moving right into adoption of the 2223 school budget. Mr. Curtis?
So we had an opportunity at our last meeting, kind of the culmination of our work from November, to present the budget as it stands to the board, and tonight it's up for adoption. So if there's any comments, any last questions that board members have, we are here to answer them. It's a budget that we feel good about. I think we've identified the needs through our principals and program directors that will support our students and support our staff next year, and I think we've had good dialogue along the way about the rationales for those and how we can offset and limit the cost to the best of our abilities, utilizing grant funding and collaboration with the town. I think we've been pretty creative there. The town, as we said in the workshop, has received some very positive news about grant list growth that should really help to offset, Amy yell at me if I'm saying too much, offset any potential tax increase, right? Which is, which is important, you know? If we can present a budget that identifies the needs and we feel good about it, and we can do that in a way that really minimizes impact to the taxpayers, it's kind of the best of both worlds, and I think we're in that situation this year, so.
I would agree with that.
I don't have a question about this, but just for the benefit of the folks watching, can you just, a quick note on process, like, where is it going to go now from here after we adopt it?
Sure. So once the Board of Education adopts the budget, we move it to the Board of Finance for a presentation. I believe that's March 8th.
Tuesday, March 8th.
Tuesday, March 8th. So Amy and I will present the budget, and staff will take questions that they may have. It's always a very rich dialogue. They then can move that to a town, town meeting, not a town meeting. They then can move that to a town, town meeting, not a town meeting, public hearing, where we present again, and public has opportunity to comment. And from there, they set a mill rate that will go to referendum. I don't have those specific dates, I don't know if you have the timeline, I'm sorry.
I do, I got it right here. Public hearing should be April 5th.
Yep.
So that would be our first public hearing.
I'll just make a comment on the budget that we've got in front of us. I think that everyone did a fantastic job putting this together, explaining the needs and the additions. I think one of the fantastic things we did this year is we looked beyond just the next 12 months and said, okay, to make sure there's no cliffs, and really came up with a nice plan on how to, you know, go beyond this budget year and look ahead. And I think that that's, we always do that, but we actually have a plan in place for some of these items, and I think that that was, that's a great way to look at this.
I attended a meeting with the Board of Finance, along with Wendy McStudis and Maria as well, and, you know, there was a lot of appreciation for the thoughtfulness in which the way we did, the work was done with our budget. The town is still in their process, but the fact that we were so thoughtful, and Wendy and Lisa both attending our workshop, we're very appreciative of all your discussion points and all the thoughtfulness and work that went into this budget, so thank you.
I mean, I actually thought that was really helpful, to have a couple of members in attendance and be able to go back and share that information with their board.
Yep.
And the process has seemed quite collaborative to me this year. It's been a positive.
Yes, I would agree.
Can I stick here?
All right, anybody, so if we're ready, I would like somebody to read the motion, please. Anybody?
Oh, go ahead.
Somebody?
I'll move that the Board of Education adopt the 202223 school budget in the amount of $77,037,081, which represents an increase of $2,584,239 or 3.47%.
And a second, please.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you all for all your hard work. Approval of policy revisions.
So this is the last step in a long relay race here to approve the 1,000 series revision. The policy committee met last year over Zoom, and then this year to review the community series as it existed, and then enhance it with four new policies based on some things we had seen in the K model. And so went through the curriculum committee, first reading and a second reading. What did I say?
Curriculum, policy.
My goodness. Then through the policy committee.
That's my job.
Sorry. The policy committee, first and second reading. It's been smooth so far until I started speaking kindly, so it's ready for a vote.
All right. Can I please get a motion on the policies?
I'll motion.
And is there a second? Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. And now we are on to the cancellation of the March 8th regular meeting. So this would be just what we said, that budget process. I would ask that you all not go out on March 8th, but come to the Board of Finance meeting with us, so we can present the budget together with Matt and Amy. So I need a motion to cancel our regularly scheduled meeting so that we can be guests of the Board of Finance.
I'll move that.
And a second, please?
Sure.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor? Okay. Katie, you're gonna make, are they, do we have any details about that meeting yet? Where it is, or whether it's online or in person?
So ladies don't call it there personally, there's no mention of coming in person, so I'll type it later to get hold there.
Okay, all right. I just wasn't sure if we were moving toward everybody being in person or not yet. All right. And now we are up to the Central School report. So excited.
All right, so we have, we have a whole team here.
Brian's getting company.
So as the team's getting settled, and I'll hand this off to Sue in a second, but just wanted to say, we've been talking about math instruction for several years at the board table in terms of an improvement initiative and different things we are working on relative to teaching and learning, instruction, supporting through coaching. And we are gonna get a little snapshot of what that looks like when it all comes together tonight and how this work is flowing through Central School, because we have teachers and coaches and curriculum directors and the principals, so. Should be a good, a good look at what mathematics looks like in the elementary schools and how we support our students, so.
All right, here we go, I'm excited. I feel like I should be on that side of the floor. It's all right, ladies, we know how to get it done. This slide should not be a new one to board members. This was the Office of Teaching and Learning's prioritization of the strategic plan, and for each of our goal areas where we were really focusing. So tonight, this presentation is about how do we take that strategic plan work and priorities? What does it look like from Betsy's seat as the Director of Elementary Curriculum, from Beth's seat as Principal, all the way to the classroom? What happens with kids each and every day? So those highlighted components of that slide are the areas of focus for tonight's presentation. And again, it focuses on reducing the achievement gap, our focus overall on math instruction, and good math pedagogy, and what does that look like? Ensuring, what do we do when our kids aren't responding to our instruction? What does that intervention structure look like? And finally, how do we utilize our collaborative structures to make that all happen? And that's what this team at Central School is going to do this evening. So starting from my left, also in pink, we are thinking spring, Megan Leonard, a sixth grade teacher, Morgan Pierce, kindergarten teacher, Lisa Smith, math coach, Principal Beth Hennessy, and Director of Elementary Curriculum, Betsy Gonzalez. And I'm gonna turn it over to Betsy for that next layer of elementary curriculum and alignment, and then we'll hear from Beth and her team about how this work is really living in Central School. Beth?
Thanks, Sue. So my role is to work with Sue and our elementary principals to align our district priorities that are outlined in the strategic plan, and then to establish consistency, so around these efforts, so across the five elementary schools. So there's certainly similar patterns and trends and similar work happening in each of our schools, for sure. This year, we very much have kept math at the forefront of our work with our principals, with the coaches, with our classroom teachers, and our teaching and learning team, which has been really exciting and certainly very engaging. So back in September, I highlighted for you some of the goals that we're gonna define our focus for the year in math, and have certainly guided our specific actions that we've put into practice throughout this year. Those focus areas include how we're monitoring student growth and achievement of standards, and this is in our effort to close the achievement gap in math, implementing a very flexible model of intervention that includes support from some additional math tutors that you supported as a board, that allows us to intervene by pushing into classrooms to respond in a just-in-time manner, and to also pull some small groups of students out for some additional teaching and support. We use our coaches to support our teachers in delivering our core instruction that we deliver in Tier One to all students in the classroom. And we've certainly enhanced our process for how we look at data and use that data to make instructional decisions at the district level, the building level, the classroom level, to get right down to those student needs, which is most important. So tonight, we're gonna make these actions come alive for you, and give you some concrete examples that explain our work to date.
So the work really begins in the summer, when in July and August, I have an opportunity to really reflect on our success and our growth areas, and really look for patterns and analyze some trends across all the math data that we have. So that's a really important step, to have time to do that in the summer. And then, as Betsy is saying, this year, we brought back the coaches. So I'm lucky enough to have a partner, the coaches, if you might remember, were in teaching positions last year, so this is the first year during the pandemic, we were able to bring the coaches back in. And working with Lisa Smith, day in and day out, has just been, just been wonderful to really help to move the work forward. But we had to, Betsy helped refine the intervention model that really was able to help us support all students, and really look and really be flexible about, and Lisa's gonna talk a little bit about that, how we're able to really support students with the intervention model. But we were hiring tutors at the same time, we were billing schedules, we had a lot of work to get off the ground. But another really important piece was my opportunity to really share my vision with the faculty, and make sure I could break that down into action steps that were really making sense to teachers. So we talked about what our targeted P L C work would be, how often we would look at data throughout the whole year, what data we would look at, and really working with Lisa, really trying to figure out the support teachers would need, now that the coaches are back, and if you remember, I hired five teachers over the summer. So there's a lot of professional development opportunities needed from having brand-new teachers or experienced teachers. So again, the collaboration with Lisa, just to make that come alive, we started off meeting once a week, twice a week, three times a week, you know, with Lisa being in the role, it was just so great to have a thought partner together to really map out what our work would be throughout the year. We set long-term priorities, short-term priorities, we really looked at some data, we talked about how our data structures would look like, and with Lisa coming out of the classroom last year, really has the pulse on what teachers would need and the support they would need. So counting on Lisa to help craft those professional development opportunities for teachers, and then having an opportunity to come back and share our growth with teachers and share our successes in an ongoing way. I'm gonna kick it over to Lisa, who'll get into a little bit more detail.
Okay, so as Beth mentioned, this is my first year as a math coach. I previously taught third and fourth grade for several years at Central, so this has been really a fun, new challenge for me, for sure. It was definitely a hard decision to step out of the classroom, but I was really excited to kind of take on this leadership opportunity, and I've always known that we have the best teachers ever at Central School, and just getting to work with them kind of more in this professional capacity has been amazing. So I, it's funny, because taking this role, right, like, you tell people you're a teacher, you don't have to explain that, that's easy, but when, like, my family and friends, like, oh, I have a new position this year, math coach, like, what's a math coach? Nobody had math coaches when we were in school. So I feel like I really, like, kind of explained my job simply as, like, I get to work with teachers and I get to work with kids, right? Like, I get to help teachers and I get to help kids, like, at the basic level, I feel like that's what I get to do every day. And so kind of in the helping and working with teachers side of it, it started at the beginning of the year with really collaborating with almost every grade level on those student learning objectives, right? So the measures that teachers have to kind of say how their students have grown and achieved by the end of the year. I got to sit down with, I would say, every single grade level team and consult and collaborate on those S L Os. Some teams got to, were trying out some new assessments and data markers that they want to look at this year, and I think Megan's gonna speak about this more later, but just quickly, Megan is, you know, an island, she's the only one that teaches sixth-grade math here at Central, so I, she and I share our S L O, mine is the same as hers, so we're kind of like in this together. We identified that at the beginning of the year as kind of like a priority grade level, so we own those kids and we own that data together, and she and I constantly get to look at it and talk about those kids. I also get to fulfill my, like, love of still teaching by going into classrooms and co-teaching or modeling for teachers, as well as, like, planning units and lessons, and small groups, whole class, kind of everything in between with them. And as Beth mentioned, we have four brand-new-to-teaching teachers at Central and multiple teachers that are new to grade level, so there's plenty of professional development and kind of like, what does good math instruction look like, professional development and collaboration to kind of go around. I also had the opportunity to join them in their P L Cs, to look at student work or talk about students and intervention, analyze math resources, and I even, I have a two-first grade and one-second grade intervention group myself to kind of keep me grounded in the work of kids, and teach me content that I was third and fourth grade, so I get to learn a lot about second and first grade math by kind of doing the work alongside teachers and with kids. So the other, you know, bucket is helping kids, and so really the other big part of my job is kind of managing our math intervention program, our MIP. So as Beth or Betsy mentioned, like, thanks to you guys, we have two tutors this year, which has been unbelievable, because I'm able to offer not only our kind of pull-out small group intervention that teachers are used to, but I'm also able to have those tutors push into classrooms, and so they're able to help all students and help teachers. That has been, like, something that I know teachers have really appreciated this year, something that's new and different and really helpful to them. We also have kind of changed our intervention model to be more fluid. In the past, there was sometimes specific dates for cycles where students could enter and exit, but now we are being way more responsive to student needs, and we're not waiting for a specific date for, oh, well, you know, the next cycle ends, this student needs help, but it's three more weeks for the cycle, like, I'm talking with teachers, we're looking at data, and they're getting started in a small group right away, which has been also really helpful. And as Beth shared, like, our weekly meetings between the two of us help us to prioritize students and intervention, focus my work across the building and my work with teachers. So it, it's just been like the, it's funny coming into a position as a math coach for the first time when math is a priority in both districts, but it's been like.
Welcome, Lisa. Welcome.
Yes, but it's been such a blast, and it's really just, like, reinvigorated my passion for teaching and learning and working with kids.
And I've been able to witness that on a couple of occasions, where I just walk in and go, what are we talking about today, ladies? Oh, let's show you this, this new kind of dataset that we have on these kids that were struggling, and this is how they're doing now, and it's, it can be celebratory and certainly reflective, but it's extremely real and collaborative, so it's been a pleasure to watch you in this role, Lisa.
Well, as a new teacher to Sims Berry, I was really drawn to the level of support that Sims Berry has to offer to teachers. I think that's really unique. And so for me, there are several opportunities to meet with grade level colleagues, to discuss learning goals, to plan instruction, especially during those P L C times that we have, which has been really helpful. We also have specific student-centered P L Cs where we get to bring all of our data, meet together as a grade level, to discuss what we're seeing right now in the classroom, but yet we also have that flexibility to adjust our instruction, adjust those learning goals based on the data that we have in front of us. And within those P L Cs, I'm also able to collaborate with Lisa, and all three of us as a grade level are able to meet and discuss and talk with Lisa about planning to receive support for the, in smaller groups for students that may be more beneficial. And then it's also been so fun and awesome to collaborate with Lisa because she has played such an important role in my own classroom. I, having her in my classroom, we're able to co-plan and coach-teach lessons, which I think my students enjoy just as much as I do.
And I was scared of kindergarten before this year, so Morgan has helped me not be scared of kindergarten.
And Mrs. Smith is a familiar face in our classroom, and she has really become a member of our kindergarten team, our classroom team, which is extremely important to the kids. And something that is also really important to know is, in kindergarten, the assessments that we give to students have to either be done individually or in smaller groups, just based on the way the assessments are created. And so having a math coach and Lisa in my classroom is really helpful, because she's able to support me in giving those assessments within the classroom. And then as an educator, I encourage my students to be lifelong learners, and so it's really important for me to be a lifelong learner as well. And so the professional development opportunities that I've had, I've received, and I am continuing to receive, are extremely beneficial. I get that ongoing support and feedback based on the standards and the implementation into the classroom, and then I'm also able to, you know, continue to collaborate with Lisa to create specific instructional plans that meet the needs of the students, of each individual student, and help them grow as learners.
And like Lisa mentioned, sixth grade's a little bit more unique in that I'm the only sixth-grade math teacher here, so while I do utilize Google Meets to virtually meet with other sixth-grade teachers and coaches across the district, Lisa and I can meet more in real time and talk, like, right in the moment about the kids that are in front of us. So we're able to analyze data, we look at next steps for instructing our students, and then also really looking at those adjustments from how the students are doing, what can we adjust with the teaching. And I think what's really exciting is that we can pinpoint areas where students may need support, and I think what's really exciting with the MIP program is we can help the kids before and during. and during the instruction, because when students do go to see math tutors, they are essentially previewing what we're about to learn. And that really helps to build, you know, obviously, the concepts that they're learning, but just that confidence when they come into the classroom, they sit up that much straighter, their hands go up more often, and they just feel more comfortable and want to be a part of what's happening. And not only are the students going to meet with the math tutors, in my classroom, they push in, and they've really become part of our community. You know, we are one big family, and they're trying to help everybody. Kids, you know, ask them for help as much as they help me. They're able to help kids that are in that math program, but then also, you know, other kids that may have their hand up. You know, and very often, because they have become such a part of what we're doing, I send kids down to where the math tutors are to tell them how they did on their last test. And it's just, it's so exciting to watch the kids be so excited about it and go down and tell like other special adults in their life how they're doing. And I think, you know, one of the things that Lisa also touched upon that's really important about this, the math program, the MIP program, is that it's fluid. Kids are, we're really able to be responsive to the students' needs, so they can enter the MIP program and get, you know, the help that they need. And then oftentimes, Lisa and I are talking about how we can possibly exit a student because they have, you know, really learned and shown growth over the past couple of weeks and can move on back into the classroom. And I think what's really neat, too, is that because those MIP tutors do push in all the time, is that, you know, it's not cold turkey. Those kids can be asking questions from me or those tutors that come in all the time, and they can really, you know, get, again, the support that's needed, both in the classroom and if they go to see the math tutors. But I think that that's one of the most important things, that it is so flexible, and I think that's why it works so well.
Beth, do you need the new staffing levels of tutors to create this?
Yes.
Okay. This kind of went hand-in-hand.
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
Can I ask a question before? I don't want to break your flow, but I feel like we're getting there, but I, I love everything I, I'm hearing. And I will geek out on math stuff all night long, so.
You're such an actuary.
How do we get kids to be passionate about math? And I, I, I feel like we're, we're almost, they're talking about like raising our hands, but, but what else are we doing to get, it, it sounds like, like, we're, it seems like we're doing all the right things to, to teach them what they need, but how do we get them to really want to learn math? It's, it's hard. It's the kind of thing, it's got a stigma sometimes. What, what are we doing to kind of get that, make it fun?
Yeah, my answer, as folks do, is the pedagogy of the program that we're using is really not about having one answer. It's really helping kids build the model, use manipulatives, use the abstract to really approach it in three different ways. And that's where sometimes you hear parents saying, like, I don't know about this new math, but the new math is a way to really engage kids. And also, the amount of time that we use small-group work together and get kids working together, get them excited. And in the Math in Focus program, every lesson starts with what they call an anchor task. It's like, kind of like a, a real-life problem or a word problem that gets kids digging in, in like an inquiry model. So we're not standing up there like direct instruction, you're going to do this, this, and this. We're really posing something to kids, getting them invested in it, and then really giving them the tools to work together.
I was going to say, too, correct me if I'm wrong, classroom teachers, thankfully, it's not been that long since I was a classroom teacher, but I feel like the passion, the, the kids who are excited about math are the ones who are confident in math, right? That's usually how it goes. So I feel like if we can build their skill level and gain them, like Megan was talking about, that confidence, like, that's when they come alive, right? That's when they want to do it, and they want to take risks, and they want to engage, is when they're feeling confident about it. It's the, when they don't feel confident, then they tend to be like, oh, I'm not good at math, I don't like math, I don't want to do math, right? Makes sense?
Well, and I think there's like a, a fun energy and an excited energy in there, too, because we say like three ways is a successful day. So the kids really try to find like at least three ways, if not more, how to solve some sort of math problem that is put in front of them. But I think, too, you know, for, this year with my students particularly, we've been talking about like putting them in real-world situations. You know, we were talking about today, like, you know, taxes, putting a sales tax on to, you know, you buy a $5 footlong at Subway, it's not just $5, you have, you know, and putting it in those real-world situations for the kids.
Megan, it's like 12 bucks.
Jersey mics. Just to tag on to, you said something about how confident kids are always happy. So you, you spoke about the MIP program and the timing. So I'm, so I'm old-school, I'm liking it back to when we had TLC at Squadron Line, like, kids could kind of zip in and out. Oh, you only needed it for three weeks, off you go. Are they, as you see improvement, do you push them back to the classroom, or do they have to finish something?
Which I think in the past, we've kind of like even held on to kids before because like, oh, the cycle's ending, we'll hold on to you for three more weeks. But no, we are in constant communication, like, we usually often wait for, Megan and I will talk about like, all right, let's just see how they do on this end-of-year assessment, they're good to go, like boom, then you're done. And it's very celebratory.
Because that's a confidence boost in and of itself.
Totally, yep.
Exactly.
And, and I feel like if you're-
Stigma of intervention.
But I think also, if you have a kid who's struggling, and I had a couple of those, that if you can grab them before it becomes so daunting, and you're not waiting for some magic timeline, that can be really helpful to have them not have that bad reaction to math.
Yep.
And we knew in a pandemic that there's a lot of kids who have needs, reading needs, we have a reading intervention program, the math program, and really, I give Betsy the credit of having the vision to create this intervention model where we have this flexibility. Oh, okay, this kid is going to get three days of math, but you know what, they might need, still need two days of reading, right? We have some flexibility, or you know what, we're going to shift it, then maybe they're only going to get one day of math and a couple more days of reading. So this flexibility this year has really just been so fluid and just so student-driven in what students need.
Are you seeing any repeat, you know, patterns with the kids?
Yeah, yeah, there's, you know, there's definitely lagging skills that we see, so definitely, but that's where the in and out is just so helpful. Or we have kids who just stay in because they just continue to need that boost after that.
Right.
And having two tutors, we can always adjust groups, too. So if we need to adjust students in groups or who's delivering the support, we can do that. So we just have a lot of flexibility to make those decisions for kids.
I was, one more question. And so the, the kid who has that number sense, who can kind of look at, you know, eight plus five and just know what it is, do they, are they still needing to break down and find their three ways? Do we encourage, like, are we discouraging them from just giving the quick answer and-
No, because that automaticity is really important as well, right? There's the kids who just know it.
Yep.
But as the work gets more complex, we really work on some of their problem-solving skills in showing it in different ways.
Okay.
So they're a little bit more flexible in their thinking.
Okay, thank you.
This is a, a common model in all of the schools?
It is. Math in Focus, Betsy, this is year six?
Oh, no, really?
Yes.
And this is K8, right?
Yes, correct.
But we're talking K6, but I know that the same curriculum is K8.
Correct.
I think it's important to say, I mean, we're here and seeing this president, but it's-
Yeah, thank you for saying that, Todd. So there's, there's similar structures and supports at all five elementary schools. That was hugely important, but since it was Central's turn, they're like, we want to give an update on math, and we think it's about time. So I said, let's, let's do it, let's get after it.
We're proud of the work.
Each, each school could tell a very similar story around these goals that we set forward with the principals in collaboration. And while Beth and Lisa meet multiple times a week, I meet monthly with all of the coaches, and where we have district conversations around the work, around the priorities, and around the actions.
So each school has the coaches, just as we, okay.
Betsy, how many coaches do we have in each school?
We have one in each school.
One in each, so there's five of you.
Yep.
And so you guys can come together to help each other, too?
Always, all the time.
Yep.
Great, great. Anybody else? We didn't mean, we don't mean to derail you if you have more, I'm sorry.
We have a little more.
Oh, please go.
We have a little more.
Please go. This is all good.
Yeah, we just wanted to give you a sample of some of the data. We use curriculum-based assessments and some computerized-based assessments, so you can see that we're looking at data in September, and we've added another, we're going to be, teachers are administering some of the assessments right now to come up with the March assessments. So you can see some of our growth here. And then some of the next steps that you've heard all of us talk about of really determining kind of who needs a little bit more push and support, where's our flexibility? Do we adjust intervention groups? We just had meetings with kindergarten through second grade last week to just really get creative about what their needs are. We have protocols, as Morgan Pierce mentioned, about looking at data throughout the year. You sent an email out today about some professional development for fifth and sixth grade for math coming up, and of course, Lisa continues to work with teachers in that area. And this year, in the curriculum, we added 15 more minutes of math time. So that's a really important piece that in our school day. So we knew we had some gaps, and the pandemic has created some gaps, and we wanted to be able to shift around some of our curriculum, so we added 15 minutes of more math time in what we call a supplemental math block. So that's been really key for teachers as well.
So can you explain the numbers a little bit more, though?
Sure. So these are some results from a computer-based assessment called STAR. So you can see our second-grade results are pretty same. So having second graders take an assessment in September is really, really hard.
On a computer.
On a computer. So we're not that worried about that. Yeah, we're not that worried about, we're a little surprised to see those December results, but these, these next results where kids have had more opportunity to practice, more time on the computer, we should see some different results. But you just see some of the growth that we're seeing each, each time that we give the assessment, and this is just one data point. You know, we have the chapter assessments, and teachers have quizzes and tests and so forth, but you can just see kind of the growth that we are making.
So what's happening in fifth grade there?
So this, this is not a surprise. When I talked about analyzing the data in the summer, if you go back to the ESPEC scores, which is the standardized assessment, this was a cohort that we were really worried about. This was where we definitely saw some gaps. So this is the work that really Lisa and I prioritized with the fifth and sixth-grade teachers this year to say, how can we close some of these gaps? What's the work we can do? And that's where we get to design the intervention program to decide, push in, pull out, how much, do we put more of our support there right now because the little ones are just coming along right now and so forth? So that's why we have that flexibility to do that.
And fifth grade is by far the most rigorous, content-heavy math in all of elementary school. It is insane.
Like, for sixth grade, 50% were proficient, or does that mean we're getting 50% of the problems in the STAR test right, and now they're getting 63% of them right? Or is it kind of same thing?
Proficient.
Okay.
Yep, proficient.
Cool.
And how will this translate to next year when they leave? So those six, like, looking at the numbers for the sixth grade, they'll go over to Henry James, right? So what would happen there?
We have vertical team meetings, which run K-12. So we share the data with our department supervisors at the middle school, classroom teachers have conversations from sixth-grade teachers to seventh-grade teachers, and we will continue to monitor growth and progress and use the same data that we use now to make informed decisions about students who might need some additional support as they continue their math journey where they're at the middle school.
And if you remember, we didn't have the intervention programs in place last year.
Right.
So we're really trying to close some gaps right now and seeing some really good results.
I was going to say, you're pleased with what you're seeing?
Yeah.
The kids are responding.
They are.
And we've also added more content back in to respond to some of the skill gaps that we've noticed. We've been able to add more back in this year.
Sorry, Sharon, I didn't mean to step on you there.
Oh, no, no, and I was saying, and, you know, the carryover will be to the intervention that we have at HAMS, too. So, you know, hopefully it will blend nicely.
We, we chose very distinctly who we wanted to have on those vertical teams, Sharon, for that purpose. So these are results that we meet actually monthly as a math vertical team and delving into some of our concern areas and data points in a way that we truly haven't before. But I think what this shows, you have the symbolism of the target, right? And it's how do you use student performance data to set the next growth target for increased improvement? And really happy with the growth we've seen so far and looking forward to those March results, and then what, how that will translate to the state assessments of ESBA in the spring.
Great job.
And really, that's the end. We're just really hoping this came alive for you, and you can see the connection between the schoolwork and the teaching and learning team that Sue leads and the essential collaboration that we have really as a, as a district to continue to work forward and, and towards these targets. And as I said, we're really proud of the work, and I'm so grateful for the hard-working teachers that we have because-
It's all about the teachers.
We are making great progress, and our kids are really working hard every day, so I hope to share some of our successes at the end of the year.
What's so great to see is that it's not just the kids going into a classroom and learning, it's the whole system behind, behind the classroom work and, and the help that I just love to see when, when I get these presentations, so thank you all.
You're welcome.
And the other thing is, I just, you know, I hope some of those little ones who were fearful of math are coming up and saying, I'm excited about it now, you know what I mean? And you just see their whole persona just change, you know? But that goes back to what, you know, Todd was saying, you know, then you know they're excited.
Right.
And it's always nice to hear that an investment we make, as far as the tutors and the coaches go, is paying off. So I'm hoping you all feel really supported, that the teachers are all benefiting, is that really is going to make those kids excited about math. And, you know, if you guys are, have the tools you need to get the job done, then that's going to only translate to the kids.
Great job.
Great.
Thank you all. Good, it's good to hear good news about math. We like that. That makes us happy. All right, so now we are back to our second public audience. Yep, no, you're fine. You have three minutes, name and address, please.
Good evening, everybody. This is, I'm Stacy Walzak, 35 Banks Road in Simsberry. I did speak at the last meeting for the first time. I hope I'm not someone who speaks at these meetings all the time, but I just have some thoughts I wanted to share with the board. Just as you recall, I'm a mom of a one-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old, and my, my husband teaches in the system as well. First, I wanted to thank you guys, the board, for making the decision to give choice, the teachers and the staff, as well as the students. We are going to go through a period of transition, perhaps we might want to call it a period of desensitizing, where we have to get used to seeing each other's faces again. But I'm confident that our community is strong and will be supportive of one another and each other's choice. I think that's very important, and I'm very happy that we continue to echo that. But I stand here as obviously a parent of a really young child who's two and a half, and I guess I just wanted to create awareness that the masking isn't really a closed issue, if you want to call it that, because the reality is that the youngest kids who are two and three and four don't have vaccinations available to them, and therefore, most teachers teaching that age and parents of children that age are not comfortable unmasking their children and until the vaccine is available. And therefore, many local daycares in Simsberry will continue to mask until that vaccine is available. While you can all probably imagine where I, what side I sit on, on that issue, I just wanted to, again, raise awareness that, you know, they're still struggling to teach, you know, social cues at that age, articulation and vocabulary. And I wish my K teachers were still here, I actually want to talk to them, I wanted them to hear this, because I really think that I worry about, you know, readiness as those kids who are two, three, and four come into the system. We potentially have a pipeline of children, like, for three years that could be behind in those areas. And, you know, we could point to studies in either direction. I'm telling you, based on feeling, my child has been impacted, and I could tell you based on peers, you know, of other parents, they feel the same. So again, it's just awareness and, you know, you might- So again, it's just awareness and, you know, you might have seen the news recently where the CDC decided to update their milestones for early childhood. And they've done it, I think it was this week, for the first time since 2004. And I don't really have an opinion on it quite yet because I haven't had a chance to dig into it. But one of the things I thought was interesting was, you know, the milestone used to be at, you know, 24 months, a child should be able to speak 50 words. And now it's moved out to 30, to 30 months. So like, these milestones are shifting. I hear my buzzer.
Sorry.
But just a quick, just to close, I guess, my comment would be that we might want to start thinking about that. You know, how are we going to handle that for the kindergarten age? You know, I don't, I, dare I say it's a blind spot. I hope it's not.